Bless our work and life together, and where there are differences, may respect and honor prevail. Provide for us fit places to work and live and decent places of entertainment, we pray. Steer us away from crime and violence, teach us to value education and the unique gifts of all of our citizens. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge religious to be led by Commissioner Lynn Bowers.
I pledge religiously to be led by the United States of America and to the rule of law for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And we ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Roach.
Here.
Mr. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Hale.
Here.
Mayor May. Here. We do have a quorum present, and would ask tonight ceremonial items, I don't know that we have any.
I move to approve the minutes.
Oh, you want to go? Okay. Move by Commissioner Haynes.
Second.
By Commissioner Roach. Any discussion? CNN or please call the roll.
Commissioner Roach.
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Hale.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, it's approved. But we don't have any ceremonial items tonight?
No.
Okay. Citizen comments, this is a point where any citizens who would like to address the commission may do so at this time, and we allow up to five minutes. No takers, okay. Next item would be readings, first reading and second reading of ordinances. We do have a second reading tonight on an ordinance, 4.1, so I would ask that the, so it's to read it by title and summary only, and entertain any motions thereon?
Number 4.1, by title, an ordinance to require an applicant to pay in full, full, all taxes, fees, penalties, and interest due and owing to the city prior to obtaining any license, permit, or approval from the city. Summary, this ordinance requires individuals doing business in the city to pay all fees, taxes, interest, and penalties owed to the city or enter into a payment plan before obtaining a permit, license, or approval from the city.
Do we have any questions or comments from the commission? Not while there are ten more.
I make a motion to approve.
Move by Commissioner Roach.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any discussion? CNN, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Roach.
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hale?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, 4.1 is approved. Next item would be first reading on 4.2, so I ask that it be read by title and summary only.
By title and ordinance, amending Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Chapter 52, Section 5204, Paragraph A1, charges relating to sewer rates. Summary, this ordinance defers the scheduled rate increases to January 1, 2016, and the increases shall be in the amount of two and one-half percent per year from 2016 through 2020, rather than the previously scheduled increases of seven and one-half percent per year for 2016 and 2017.
Okay, thank you. Next item would be 4.3, first reading, so if they read that by title and summary only, please.
By title and ordinance, amending Section 37.31E of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to pay plan, classification, and compensation. Summary, this ordinance creates the position of IT manager in order to facilitate the reorganization of the IT division and to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the IT division. The grade for the IT manager position will be 95.
Thank you. Were there any questions on any of these items? Next item would be orders, we have no orders. Next item was resolutions, we have no resolutions. So next item, this would be the consent calendar, I would ask, we're also, the staff's requested like 7.10 be removed from the agenda, I think we got that emailed today, so if there's no objections, 7.10 will be up, and we just ask the city manager to read the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 7.1, not to exceed 400,000 citywide brownfield assessment contract with AMEC. The 400,000 will be reimbursed by an EPA brownfield assessment grant. Item 7.2 is sewer extension contract with Commonwealth of Kentucky to extend sanitary sewer in the Boone National Guard Center at no expense to the City of Frankfurt. Item 7.3 is a $3,060 final balancing change order number one with ADE contracting for sewer main replacement on winding way. Item 7.4 is a $61,840 amendment number one to engineering services agreement with URS for the Papa Creek Pump Station to provide surveying, design, and bidding services. Revised contract amount is $83,541. Item 7.5 is a $99,220 amendment number one to engineering services agreement with URS for the Home Depot Pump Station for surveying, design, and bidding services. Revised contract amount is $130,753. Item 7.6 is not to exceed $100,000 amendment number three to engineering services agreement with GRW Engineers to provide additional construction days up to four months due to a delay in the Kentucky Avenue Interceptor Project. These fee services will be removed from the Kentucky Avenue Interceptor Project. Item 7.7 is a $20 increase for season passes for the golf fees and a $1 to $2 increase for increases, or increase the cart rental for the 2015 season. Item 7.8 is a new family aquatic center rates for 2015 from daily entry to season passes and party room rental, et cetera. These were approved by the Park and Rec Board. Item 7.9 is not to exceed $35,000 expense for playground equipment on, just off of Magier Avenue in the Home Street Neighborhood for a new park as approved by the Park and Rec Advisory Board. We're pulling item 7.10. Item 7.11 is a two-year, $5,800 per month janitorial service contract with Lower's Cleaning Service for City Hall, Public Safety, and IT Buildings effective December 1, 14. Item 7.12, one-year, $204, $204 per month medical waste disposal contract with Secure Stream effective January 1, 2015. This is for the fire department. Item 7.13, or 7.13 is annual and renewal of up to five-year, $25,000 per year contract with Dr. Walter Lovers to provide medical director services for the fire department effective January 1, 15. Item 7.14 is a $16,972 and 6 cents contract with Cultural Resources Analysis to update the historic regulations process and draft guidelines for the Special Historic District. Item 7.15 is to release unneeded sanitary sewer easements in the Augusta subdivision on Old Station Road. Item 7.16 is a $50,800 vehicle bid award to municipal equipment to attach brush equipment to a 2005 International Recycle Truck. Item 7.17 is a $72,900 total Patcher Vortex Equipment to provide street repairs for asphalt and concrete streets. Item 7.18 is a $3,057 per month dark fiber and internet access agreement with the Frankfurt Plant Board to provide greater bandwidth. Item 7.19 is a three-year, $5,728.46 per year lease to own agreement with publicfinance.com for a 1,000 gallon emulsion storage tank to assist with concrete and asphalt street repairs. Item 7.2, I do want to make a correction under background, it does read 1014, or 1,014, and it should read 2,014, and this is for a five-year landfill contract agreement extension that includes a 3.5% cost increase per year for the disposal of solid waste material. It's important to note, our agreement previously was 5%, so congratulations to Tom for hard, his hard work. 7.21 is a zero contract, self-funded workers' compensation application with the Kentucky Labor Contract, or Cabinet, excuse me. Item 7.22 is personnel, we have an appointment of Carla Turner as a telecommunicator one effective 11/25/14. That concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion on the consent items.
Make a motion to approve.
Move by Commissioner Roach.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haynes. All those in favor, I mean, who voted, will be considered to vote in affirmative on the consent items unless they filed vote modification forms with the city clerk, we don't have any. Consent items are approved. I don't have board appointments tonight, I think I've got some in December 1 or 2. In all business, we have 9.1, discussion of police department's proposal for 12-hour shifts, I believe, there's going to be a presentation on that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm sorry. Are you going to make a presentation, chief, on the 12-hour shift, or is it? Okay.
And I'll try to keep this pretty brief, I know that we've all discussed and emailed back and forth, and be more than happy to answer the questions that you may have. But as we discussed in the work session, we're proposing to you, with your support, to move the police department away from our current eight-hour model shift to a 12-hour model. It is our hope to improve and increase some of the services that we can provide to the community by increasing the number of officers that are available 24 hours a day on patrol throughout the city, and also to give us the ability to increase our proactive efforts with items such as the community-oriented policing philosophy. Basically, I would just open up for questions, anything that you all would have from this point forward with regard to 12-hour shifts.
Commissioners have any questions for Chief Abrams?
I have some general questions, because I've just only read the emails that went back and forth about the questions that Commissioner Roach had brought up, and I'm actually in support of it. My concern is to make sure that we don't do overtime after 12-hour shifts, because I've been on a 12-hour shift and that'd be really not the same. It wears and tears on you. So my general question was, most of them either go 8, 10, or 12. Was 10 ever considered?
10 is considered, but from my understanding and my, what research I've done with 10 hours, and also, we've had 10 hours on one of our shifts in the past, we love it, it's great. But in order to staff all three shifts with 10 hours, it would greatly increase the number of manpower that we would need to have in order to, because essentially, you're staffing 30 man-hours in a 24-hour day. So the overlaps are great, and the number of people are great, but it does take more people to do it.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'm sorry to answer your other question, that's something that we're going to closely watch through management, as far as making sure that the 12 hours doesn't become 13, 14, or 15. I can't say that that would never happen, depending on the circumstances, but I think that through management, we can limit that a great deal, just simply through communications of letting the officers know that the relieving, or the relieving shift will also relieve a particular incident, if at all possible, and, you know, hold calls where necessary or relieve when necessary.
And we still have 95% of the people that are for it, has it gone up?
It's gone up.
Okay.
It's gone up, we're about, well, 98% at this point.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Bowers, has your hand up?
So, I think I asked this before, but, so we're going to be doing, are they going to be doing four days, four 12-hour shifts? Are they going to be in three 12-hours plus four more hours? How are they going to do that?
It's going to, it's something that we've talked with city manager and human resources and payroll. Essentially, would, on payroll, it would appear to be a 36-hour week and a 48-hour week. But by ending our pay periods at a specific time of day, then we're able to take four hours from the 48-hour week and match that with the 36-hour week. So that makes that a 40-hour week, and the second week is 44, and that's where the built-in overtime that we've discussed.
So they'll have 40 hours the one week and 44 the next?
Yes, ma'am.
All through the year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Like, does the 2% of the officers that don't want this, are they going to be forced, are they going to have to do this, or is there?
No, 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 the 12 hours won't be forced, more than likely, anyone who doesn't want to work the 12-hour shifts will work the 10-hour shifts.
Okay.
And, but the thing is, is you can do the 10 with a very limited number of officers.
Okay.
So as long as we're, as long as we're, you know, close to 100%, the 10 hours would work to supplement that with, if it's just a handful.
Well, the only comments that I've heard in the public have to do with, are the officers going to become too tired on their shift to be public-friendly and effective, and you've looked at all the research on that?
Yes, ma'am, I have, and it's certainly a concern. I mean, and that's something that we're going to have to watch and monitor closely. But, you know, and I read, of course, in the State Journal, and I talked with Seth, the sleep study doctor alluded to the fact that the circadian rhythms, et cetera, on night shift are harder, and that's certainly true. But, you know, it's important to keep in mind, we, it's true now, on eight-hour shifts, the night shift is very tough on anyone. Most of the time, and I did eight years on night shift, most of the time, you're going to be awake anyway. I mean, I would always sleep until 3, 2 or 3 o'clock in the afternoon, so I was awake during those hours, I wasn't at work, but I was awake during those hours. So it's just a, really, it's going to be individualized, and the officer's going to have to manage that. But now, I don't think that, I don't think that we'll get to the point where it'll be so overwhelming, we won't let it get to the point where it's overwhelming that it would be detrimental to the safety of a citizen or an officer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Roach?
Is everybody done? Okay. I guess I just got really four, four things, I guess I'd say off the front end, is I'm pretty excited about this. I think, you know, with strong management, this has the potential to really do a lot for our community, so I'm excited. I know there are downsides, people talk about, are they going to be fresh enough, all those different things, but I think if you've got strong leadership, you can overcome those things, and so I'm hopeful, and that's why we're calling it a pilot. So if it doesn't work, we, we don't keep doing it.
Absolutely.
So the four things, I guess I'm concerned about, that I'd like to see, if everybody's on board with it, like to see that happen, and one's criteria, I'd like the five or six pieces of criteria that I think I'd emailed to you, chief, and we talked about a little bit on the phone, and today in person, I'd like to get our criteria done before it starts, if that's possible, as much as we can, so that we, then we can have a true measurement in a year with the same stuff, so we can look at our outcomes and say, well, this is what's happened with our community survey, this is what's happened with the survey of our officers, this is what's happened with our crime statistics, this is what's happened with our completion rate, the various things, and, and try to get that to the commission prior to January 1, or as much as we can, explaining what the tool is and why the tool is being selected, so then, in a year, when you, working with city manager, say, well, this is something we want to go with, or something we don't want to go with, then we as commissioners can look back and measure it with the new statistics to see whether or not this is something really worth doing. Because what tends to happen is, when we take on something new, it's often hard to get rid of, even if it didn't work, you know, because you get used to it.
Sure.
So, is everybody all right with criteria?
And Commissioner, that, the crime data is certainly available, we track that now, and that's going to be a big thing that I'm hoping to see, and we talked earlier, there's a very real potential that we may see what would appear to be a spike in crime the first year, because hopefully, we're going to put 50 to 60% more man-hours on the street, so we're going to have more officers that are hopefully going to discover more things. But I think that what you need to look at is the clearance rate.
That's it, clearance rate, I'm sorry.
Yes, the clearance rate, so, you know, hopefully, if we're out here active and being proactive and doing this type of work, you may see an increase in the numbers, but our success in dealing with that is what I hope to see. Now, I have that data available now. The only data that I see being difficult between now and the first year may be the community survey. But that being said, I have an idea to put something digitally on our website, Facebook, different things like that, that hopefully, we'll be able to ask citizens, have you seen an increase versus 2014 in the number of officers that contacted, so the positive contact with officers as far as the community-oriented policing reach-out type program?
And then, with the, in the survey that you did, Rebecca, weren't there some questions on police?
If I remember correctly, they're mostly very positive for the police and fire, if I can go back and get.
So, so we can kind of assess it. That one's going to be fuzzy, I agree. One, we don't have a huge number of people that did the first survey, but, so if we could have that to the best of your ability, I think that'd give us something to measure.
Absolutely.
Just a comment on the survey, possibly the neighborhood associations could help distribute surveys throughout the different communities and get a better response rate than just relying on someone to go to the website.
Well, and there are some concerns with that, and I'd be happy to discuss those with you all, the concerns, but one of the things that we're going to do right away is we're going to increase the number of neighborhood watches that we have. So once we get those increased, then absolutely, that would be a good, a good resource for us to distribute that information.
But the second thing is, I would support the savings that you're going to try to realize to help pay for it, that were put forth in your chart, and I'm certain everybody's on board with that. The, the third thing is, I'm not, I don't think I'm that keen on not buying the two cars, I know that's surprising, but I, but I think, I think that we probably would be better off just continuing to try to keep the fleet up to speed, and then surplus in the cars that aren't any, were cheap, in which I think you indicated there may be 10
Yes.
That we might want to surplus. And then, then for me, I'd like to pay for it with fewer officers, and I would propose that we use 59 or 60, I'd rather have 59, but you don't always get what you want. And I'd also look at it, in light of the things that you've shared with me, I'd look at it to try to figure out a way to, between you and Kathy Fields and the city manager, to look at it from a dynamic perspective, and that is, this fear that you have, which is, I've got 62, but, you know, I may, I may get to 62, and three months later, be at 59. In other words, I don't want to be held at 59 and then really not have a 56 or 57. But I believe if you're fast on your feet, which I know you are, and you're looking at the data, and who may be going to be retiring, and you know who you might be having, you know, various personnel issues with, I think close collaboration between you and the other two people, I believe you could keep it dynamic and still keep the average at 59, and thus pay for the program easily. Now, I don't know where anybody else is on that.
Well, I understand where you're coming from, but certainly, I'm going to stick to my guns and ask to stay 62. And I think that that reason is, I think that is a very baseline for the service that we want to try to be able to provide, and I appreciate what you're saying, and it certainly does offset that cost, even above and beyond the items that I presented here. I feel like 62's a healthy number for our agency and for the department, and we'd be more than happy to discuss that in the future, but right now, moving into this thing, it's got enough scary aspects to it, to go ahead and look at it upfront, with being too short, it adds a level of fear to the success of the program, that hopefully, maybe we could discuss that later, but right now, I'd appreciate to stay where I'm at if the commission supports.
You know, encounter to that, and I understand that. If you're, if you're going to, if you're going to increase coverage 60%, which you would if you get to 62, realize that's an if, then seems to me, if you're at 59 or 60, and your coverage increases overall something on the order of 40 to 55%, depending on how it slices, you've still, you know, done a tremendous, I think, changed things tremendously to the positive, and I'm not, I'm not as confident as your cost savings, you know, there's not as many cost savings there that pays for it, and I just want us, you know, my thing has always been, I want to keep personnel costs as a percentage of budget the same, so I just don't want to increase them. So I understand your position, so the counter would be, we still can do really good things, it's just not quite as good.
Okay.
Okay. And I don't know where everybody else is on that.
Okay, Commissioner Hale.
If I remember from our conversation earlier, you can pay for the rest of this fiscal year on current budget surplus, is that accurate?
I feel completely confident that that is the case. I think with current manpower, just the budgetary savings that have been realized as a result of having vacancies in this fiscal year, I think that that will more than offset this program, that in and of itself.
One of the things that I'm really excited about with this is the possibility of COP, because I was involved in that, and I know how successful that was in South Frankfurt. So what kind of personnel level do you have to be at in order to be proactive with COP throughout the community?
Ideally, I like the thought of staying at 62 in order to keep that a sustainable and a proactive approach, and that's certainly what that is. That's something that, that you need to have that, that manpower support in order to be able to stay at that level and to provide that level of service with a COP philosophy.
Thanks, that's all.
Any others? So the, the amount was 160?
$169,000 is the estimated cost of the built-in four hours of overtime.
And you're going to absorb that this year through not, with some savings, but I bought persons of equipment and some things.
Correct. I hope to, I hope to, you know, let me say this too, I hope to, through sound management, be able to make these reductions, just because these reductions can be made. And I think that the 12-hour shift in and of itself is going to make a lot of these reductions for us based on comparison to the current model. So that, that is hopefully going to offset a great deal, just because it's going to be a completely different way we do business.
Sure. Well, I think too, as previously said, Commissioner Hale said, the COP program, I was mayor when we didn't have it, then we instituted, and then it went away, so I know that things I hear in the community are from folks that say, we want to see the bike patrol officers, we want the segways, the foot patrols, and unfortunately, we don't have manpower to do that in every neighborhood, but with this implementation of the 12-hour shift, you feel confident that we'll be able to see some more neighborhoods being, seeing the bike officers?
Absolutely, and on several different levels, and one of the things this is going to do, is this going to allow us to schedule and place our manpower in such a way that we have a healthy balance on each of the squads with the bike patrol officers, et cetera. Also, with an intelligence-led policing approach, and the captain's duties will, that they will assume, we're going to be able to target hotspots, and that bike patrol may be on the west side of town in the neighborhood today and on the east side tomorrow, if that's where the issue is, so we can direct that manpower based on data-driven needs.
Great. Thank, I think that's, okay, thank you, chief, so much.
Thank you.
I'm losing my voice. So, will this be, the next, in order to implement this, do we need to do an order? Or just going to do an administrative?
What the, what you're doing, mayor, is approving the ordinance, or, no, not that's the one, no, you don't have to do a thing.
12 hours of our time on mine.
Because they don't need, they don't even need a budget amendment.
I'll say next year when the budget comes around, we'll just adjust, just to, okay. So the department can implement this?
Yes, without an order.
Without an order, okay.
And they will need to make a change to the, their policies and procedures manual that Chief Abrams and I have already discussed.
Okay. Do you have another question?
Well, I guess, but I think I got it. So basically, the, no, no, you're good, chief. So basically, we're, everybody's on board with the proposal, and the idea of fewer officers, nobody's on board with it but me, and I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure I know where it's staying. And you all aren't worried about costing more money?
Well, I think.
Hoping that we can use what's, what's built in this year to pay for it.
What you used the word a while ago that I think is key, pilot, so if we change one thing at a time, then we can actually see what that change does, whereas if we change too many things at one time, then we're back to figuring out which thing, you know, so...
All right, now, just want, like I said, I just want to know where we are. The other thing, let me say, is, you realize, everybody that's up here, I'm sure does, that one of the reasons why we've done so well budget-wise the last two or three years is because the police department hadn't had their number of offices, officers, so as a result, we realized $300,000 to $500,000 a year in savings, because they weren't at that budgeted number. So, I guess what I'm letting you know is, is we do go to 62, and we do spend the extra $169,000, you're really not talking about $169,000, you're talking about an increase in costs of something on the order of $469,000, if they, it could be more than that, like for right now, there's 57 officers. So if each officer costs $85,000, that means you're looking at $420,000 plus $169, so that's $589,000 that no longer, and I'm fine with that, just want everybody to know that when you look at these surplus numbers that Steve gives you, and he says we should get $500,000, $750,000, the line, a big...
the line, a big chunk of that is because the police department is not at their number.
But, we've pretty much been there for two whole years. So, I mean, Chief, do you think the chances are next week you're gonna get five slots filled? I mean, it's been real slow over the past twenty-four months. It's like, we haven't, so, the way I've always looked at it is, like, that number's there, but we're never really reaching it, but it's there if we need it.
Correct. That's what it's been in the past.
So, it could kind of be a cushion during this pilot phase of this to, if we get in a tight spot, we know we've got those five positions we can pull in until we can reexamine this?
Yes, ma'am, and I think realistically, if we decide right now to go to sixty-two, it would be after this fiscal year is complete, before we could realistically do it anyway. So, this fiscal year will be over, and we'll be making the budget for fifteen, sixteen. So, we'll have six months' worth of data by the time that we get to it.
Got it, thanks, ma'am. Okay. Any others? All right, thank you. Any other old business that wasn't on the agenda? Commissioner Ruch?
Well, I'm hoping to get a little help on the, on Buttermore Hill, which we agreed to at the, at the last work session to have that meeting on December the eighth with the various parties. I sent an email out, and my fear's still the same, which is, I'm nervous about having a meeting with the community and, and the stakeholders, various stakeholders, because I think our knowledge base is really low. So, I wonder if we couldn't get a lot of information gathered ahead of time from the county, the city schools, from, I think city managers on this, from the county judge, various other entities. So, and perhaps, we want, might even wanna put off a meeting with, with the, with the neighborhood until we have all of our information. Because I hate to have a, a meeting to where we don't have, we really don't know what we're talking about. Like, for example, where, this is just something simple, but like, where does the city's land go to? Where's the county start? Why, why did it develop or not develop between Signal Ridge and Payne? It's probably because of the geography, I'm just, and then, things like the city and the county and the schools, the, you know, really, that's not an issue to where we tell, or we even suggest which district takes them, they're in the county. So, I thi, I think the idea of bringing all those people together is sound, and I supported it, but I'm afraid of having it before we know very much.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it would be better to get a little more information before we involve the public. Because right now, we don't really know what to tell the public. I just think. I guess my suggestion was based on the premise that when you get all of those stakeholders in the room, that's where your information comes from. That's where you get all the information about the needs, the concerns, and the issues. And so, all of the stakeholders are able to hear all of those firsthand. And I didn't really envision that we would be walking into a meeting and saying, here's how it is, and here's what it is, and here's what we're telling you. But that it would be a meeting where the residents would actually have a part in providing some of that information, and that we would work with them. I was envisioning something a little bit different than us going in prepared like the professor who's given all the information that we found from research, but that they would have a lot of information that they could share with us as well. And, but I do think that when we have that meeting, it needs to be at a time when it's convenient for them to be there. So, I would be willing to project that time out a little bit so that we can find a time that, I think that Mr. Zizov told me that the county and the city schools are both willing, and that the county government is what they're, we, all the parties are willing now. But what I, I don't wanna see happen is, all the parties come except the Buttermore Hill residents aren't there. So, that would kind of defeat the whole point of what I think that it would accomplish. So, if we could find a time when those residents are available to us as well, I don't know. So, perhaps move, moving it off, I think right now, we have December eighth on the calendar, but that's the middle of the day, and, it's what?
Yeah, you're right.
And I know, I know a lot of people up there work during the middle of the day. And so, those are the people that are impacted. So, I would be willing to, Commissioner, Commissioner Hale's the one that brought this to our attention, and she won't be here in January, but I would certainly think that Commissioner Hale could still come to that meeting and be a part of it since she brought it up. But if we could maybe do that a little bit later than December eighth, so we could really put our heads together and find out when everybody actually can meet, including those residents, do you think?
I'm, I'm fine with meeting later, and in, in the evening, so that they can come. And I don't mean that we don't wanna get everybody's ideas and try to use that. What I don't wanna happen is, is that we show up for a meeting, and we, we don't know anything about the issue, except that there's a problem. I'd, I'd like to have a, you know, like, for example, I think we're looking into whether or not you can put the steps back. Who's be responsible for the steps? What's the state of the road? None of these things do we know.
So, we can develop an agenda between now and then?
Yeah, develop an agenda and have information so that when we get everybody's ideas, or they ask, and, you know, even if we're just getting ideas, they're gonna ask us some questions, and, you know, if you don't know anything.
Right. And, and maybe that will give us, if we can put it off into further in December, or even January, Commissioner Hale, you would be certainly welcome to come. I would think that you would be, that we, that would give the neighborhood also time to maybe organize itself and come with some information to bring us. Yeah, I, I agree. I think if we're going to have a community meeting, it needs to be at a time when the community can be there. In the middle of the day is not conducive to that. So, so put it off till, what, January?
See what the? I'm, I'm fine with that, provided we can get, you know, get our information so we're better prepared, and then bring them, and, and not do it professorial.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
I'm with you, I understand that.
I want them there, but I think you're, I think, you do have a point.
We can do both, we can do both.
That'll give them time to bring more information to us as well, and maybe time to organize and get a lot of folks to the meeting. But I think it's good that both school systems and the county government are in agreement. They are, Mr. Zizov?
They have agreed to meet.
Okay.
On December eighth.
Well, I think we can actually still have that meeting, that wouldn't change anything. I really don't even mind walking around asking, you know, in the Buttermore Hill area. I live close to that area, because from what I understand, it's about four to six kids. And there may be some other alternatives that we're not thinking about, that they might think about, that, you know, we, we know the steps. Everybody knows the bus situation, that's very high, you know, it's very hard to turn around. But we don't wanna not do anything. And, but if we just show that we, we're concerned, and I, and I think Commissioner Bowles is correct, at some point, we got to involve the community. I just don't know if them at a meeting-type thing is gonna be what helps us get through this process. And I think all of us have our best intentions in mind. And if, if they, if they already have a meeting scheduled, we could meet, but it's gonna be like a brainstorm, and I'm not sure what we'd come, come out of, out of it. But it might give us something to ask the people that live there.
Well, if we, if we did wanna have that December eighth meeting, if we could just get a few of those individuals to come represent them. But I think we definitely want somebody from the neighborhood there. But I, I mean, I, I can go ahead in December eighth and do that, or we can wait until January, it's whatever. I, I believe that.
What time is it presently scheduled for on December eighth?
Two.
One o'clock.
One.
I don't, I think, I think if we wanna have a, a meeting, a first preliminary meeting without the public, or with one, or representative from Buttermore Hill, or two representatives. But, you know, if you're gonna have one o'clock, and you're wanting to include the public, that's not, I don't think that's what makes it work.
It's not enough time. And I, I believe that those, I believe that all of those parties that have agreed to be there would probably agree to be at a meeting at a different time. But, I know, Mr. Zizov, you probably spent some time getting that together. So, whatever people wanna do, you can have one.
One option, maybe, to go ahead and, and try and conduct the meeting, because we do have agreement from the other three governmental entities.
Okay.
Maybe at the staff level, maybe we could have a meeting a week or so before. We still have next week, and we might be able to put together some of the information. And then, we can invite the neighborhood, but also leave them with an option that, we're not sure we're gonna solve anything this time, but we will conduct a later meeting after with the public invited, and see what we can come up with.
And then, is Commissioner Roach just to make sure the follow-ups at night, or Saturday, or sometime?
Yes.
I think that's a good idea. What do you think, Commissioner?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, sounds good to me. That's a little do. Thanks, Commissioner. Any other, excuse me, any other old business?
Mister, I know you have some more, right?
You know what, I know you're shocked, but I don't.
Oh, I'm shocked.
I do think, when we, we do the close, I have a, I have a question, Adele. Just a personal question I wanna ask. And since I can't ask everybody, the only way to do it would be to add that one F to the... Whoever's gonna make a motion?
What?
Well, because we're doing a closed session for the litigation.
To add one F?
If y'all.
I make a motion to go into closed session. Second.
For KRS 6180 sub one, sub C litigation, sub one, sub F personnel? Is that it?[1715.45]